You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the May 7th meeting of the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county dot org.
Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the LaPorte County Commissioners Meeting, Wednesday, May 7th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. If everyone would stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Roll call?
Commissioner Conny Grammarosa.
Present.
Commissioner Steve Hallifield.
Present.
Commissioner Joe Haney.
Present.
All are present, and you have a quorum.
Consider agenda?
I'd like to make a couple amendments to the agenda. Under 9C, remove that completely. We're doing a little more research on how they're going to fund that. I would like to add, under new business, 10F, appointment for Plan Commission.
That would be old business.
Old business, I'm sorry, yeah, old business, yeah. So 10A, 10B, travel form update, 10C, the records retention update for the meeting.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
There was the 10A would be Plan Commission appointment, and you said 10C was record retention.
The records retention meeting.
What was B?
B would be the travel form update that we talked about the last meeting. We've got to get these travel requests under control.
All right, I'd second that with an amendment to also add on, consider water damage settlement claim from our attorney.
Okay, so that would be?
Under?
Old business?
No, 11F.
Make that 11F.
11F, okay. I'll second that.
Shall we have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider approval of claims. Oh, wait a minute, I have to do, consider approval of the April 16th, 2025 minutes. I apologize.
Make a, well, go ahead, Joe.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on, consideration of claims.
For the payroll ending 4/18/2025, $1,486,035.70. And also, we had another payroll during this period, 5/2/2025, $1,467,024.32.
Motion to approve payroll is presented.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Operating expense claim?
Operating expense claims, $2,760,120.70.
Make a motion, we accept the operating expense claims as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Department head comments.
Public comment.
Or, public comment, sorry. I'm checking them off.
One step ahead.
Public comment is now open.
Good morning, Commissioners, Andy Skia of LaPorte County Project Management, Mark Was Electric. I don't know the proper setting, but I would like to ask if it'd be possible if you would consider getting on one of your upcoming agendas. So last year for the bridge, we split the structural work into two, in half because of the timeframe. We're currently still working on the second half of the planning, which would be the tread plates, which would be pushed to not this fall, but next fall. So I would wonder if it would be possible if you would consider on one of your agendas, if we could get on the agenda to go out for pricing for the second half of those structural repairs. So if that's still your intent, if we could get on the coming agenda so I could receive your approval to release that, that would be nice, so we have more time versus the previous winters, I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take care of it.
Public comment is still open. Good morning.
Good morning, it's a beautiful day. Rich Rosenzinski, 2303 East, 150 North, LaPorte, Indiana. I'm missing all the fun.
I bet you are.
I bet I am. I want to thank you for taking quick action on the sewage running into our building. Waiting to get three bids would be, but one of the dumbest ideas that somebody's come up with in a long time. Thank you for taking care of that. I have some people have asked me about why they were spending taxpayer dollars to put campaign literature in the tax bills from the recorder. Another dumb idea, I think needs to be investigated. And then there's Joe. November 6th, this board passed the road agreement between RWE Solar and the county. I know because I worked on it a lot, myself, Mr. DiMartino, Mr. Pagek, Anthony Novak, Charity Glasser. It took a lot of doing to get the solar company to agree with what we wanted. The fact, I think I rewrote it about seven times, but I finally got it done. This board passed it on November 6th. Apparently, Mr. Haney, you either didn't understand it or didn't read it at all, or lying, I don't know what, but if you read it, there'll be inspection of the roads, which we need to start soon to look at the condition of the roads, so that when these heavy hauls do, for solar, do any damage, we'll make them pay for it. They will pay for that. They will also pay for the inspection. So when you're saying that $65,000 is going to be paid by the taxpayers, that ain't right. You need to read it, Joe, or have somebody read it to you. That's not right. RWE will be paying for the inspections, okay? That's the way it was written. Keep up the good work, you two.
Thank you.
Department heads, I mean, excuse me.
More public comment.
Public comment, anyone else for public comment? Hearing and seeing no one, standing up, we're going to close public comment. Moving on to department head comments.
Good morning, Ella Bilderbeck, LaPorte County Recorder. Myself and my chief deputy, we attended a state called Indiana Recorders Conference in April. We had sessions led by SBOA panels discussing issues affecting the office. We also had visits from Diego Morales and Maureen Braun, First Lady of Indiana. Every year, Recorders Association picks a charity that we support. This year, it was Imagination Library, Dolly Parton, we raised $5,400. Turns out, Maureen Braun is a big supporter of that charity, and so that's probably a good news for the, for the organization. Also, to address the issue of campaign materials in tax bills, we included information on the program that my office has been offering since long before I was in the office. Yes, it has my name, and it, yes, it has my face on it, because we want the taxpayers to know it's a legitimate thing. I cannot run for this office again, so nobody can say that I'm promoting myself for a recorder yet again. As a matter of fact, we had 1,374 new subscribers sign up. Many of people who call our office are elderly, they can't afford the programs that are offered, they're like LifeLock, that are very expensive, and they're very grateful to have that, to protect them. So the fact that I'm trying to help residents of this county should not be a attack on me personally, claiming that I'm campaigning. That is insulting, frankly. Trying to help our residents is not promoting myself.
We did not say you were campaigning, but the question I had...
Mr. Hallifield, this is, this is comment?
Oh.
No.
You can make this at your comment.
Okay, okay.
Right, so this is, right, so this is department head comment.
Correct.
Anyways, I just wanted to let you know, we attended a really great Recorders Conference, and, yeah, I'm very happy with the result of letting our constituents know about the program. That's totally free to them, totally free to the county, and it gives them a peace of mind. It's not going to cover them with millions of dollars of backup, but it gives them a chance to respond quickly. Just a few days ago, we had a document recorded where title company had to go and reverse documents, saying this was fraudulent, this is the correct one. Unfortunately, a lot of the new things that are happening is, No Republic being, they take genuine signs, signatures, genuine stamps, fake the document, AI doesn't help, because it can make it so easy to copy paste, and then we have no way of knowing that it's a fake document, recorded, and then issues happen. So, and it's not just out there, it's happening in this county. And so being able to protect people is, I think, a good thing to do, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Department heads, any other department heads?
Good morning, Mike Rosenbaum, auditor, county auditor. Our state mandated meeting is next week, so we are looking to send five people there, it's free, and most of us are able to attend the one in Plymouth, and there's a new request. They cannot have all of us attend in Plymouth because of the size, so if we can take a look at that later, we'll take care of it. Yesterday, there was some training available by the AIC that put it out, and then last evening, we were represented by six people from our county, two commissioners, myself and my chief deputy, Joey Winsky, the tax assessor, the county assessor, and his chief deputy, so Mike Schultz and Stacy Schweitzer were also there. There was a tremendous amount of conversation that was about property taxes, they talked about also some administrative rules, the state budget, road funding, it just went on, it, there was quite a bit, even elections were covered, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of new rules that we're learning about, and that we are all, all trying to grasp and work with each other, so we really appreciated having everybody there. On an internal side of things, we have the State Board of Accounts currently finishing up our year 2023. They, like in other years, have found some findings, so right now, we're working on the corrective action plans and improving the internal controls for future, so that this way, we can eliminate these issues and findings and cut down the reports from 50 pages to next to nothing. So that's what I have for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's some other things I'd like to quickly mention, I don't know why it slipped my mind. We have a remote claims process, and one of the things that I'm going to have to send out an email to all the department heads, they need to start signing the documents that they're scanning in, because otherwise, I don't have a proper approval to pay them. So that's one of the new things that should have been added previously, but we will add it. It was something that some departments were doing, but not all, so we want to get that all together. We are also going to start the budget process, yes, it is only May, but the budget process, the budget hearings have been set for the middle of July, the 14th, 15th, and 16th. So with that being a little bit earlier, because there's a conference the following week, so we wanted to make sure everybody knows that June 30th is going to be a very strict deadline on getting these things. One of the things is going to be the Form 144s, which is literally just listing every employee and what their salary is expected to be for next year. And then the other thing is, there'll be what we call the budget or Form 1, where everybody will be given the opportunity to request what they think that they need. And we're going to add a third request to that, is that we're going to also ask for just, for capital improvements for the next few years, to please give us a heads up, so this way, as we know funding starts becoming tighter and tighter, that we can try and see what we can fit in. And we're only talking about for your department, we're not talking about anything more than that. So if your department needs a vehicle, if your department needs some heavy, needs replacement of all your computers, or something like that, that's what we're looking for, that simple. So thank you very much for allowing me the additional time.
Thanks, Mike.
Any other department heads, we have someone coming up.
Good morning. Stacy Schweitzer, Chief Deputy of Assessors Office. I just wanted to let you guys know, and anybody that's listening, our Form 11s Notice of Assessments went out last week, you should receive it, it's a bright green form. It's a document that indicates what your assessment will be for your tax bill next year, which can be confusing, because tax bills are currently due right now, so it can be kind of confusing, it does not affect the tax bill that's due in May, November of this year, it is for your bill next year. There's an ability to file the form online, there's a QR code on the form you can scan, obviously, you can come into the office, you can call the office, or you can send an email to anybody that is in the office. You have until June 16th, which is a Monday, to file that appeal. And again, if you have any questions, they can just call the office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I have asked if Mike's picture won that one?
If what?
Any other department heads? Last call for department heads.
Commissioner Grammarosa, or President Grammarosa, I've got an update here. Public comment mentioned a $65,000 contract, so should probably follow up on that, so follow up on previous talks from a couple months ago, a meeting, there was a, at the end of last year, at the end of December, Commissioner Rosenzinski had, former Commissioner Rosenzinski had unlawfully signed a contract for $65,000 for a consulting company to do some work. As we know, we were able to stop that contract, as our attorney had said, former Commissioner Rosenzinski acted unlawfully, followed up with the State Board of Accounts on that. LaPorte County will be getting written up for that violation. There's no, because we, because we, with your help, Commissioner Grammarosa, stopping that contract before money changed hands, since there's no, there was no financial transaction with that, State Board of Accounts is just going to give us that letter. It's one of the unfortunate things when it comes to white collar crime and politicians, the, the State Justice Department seems to be...
I don't know if anybody mentioned any crimes or anything, you're free to make the comment, but...
Sure. Right, well, I mean, you would agree, you put in writing, he acted unlawfully.
It was, yeah, a civil matter, the contract shouldn't have been signed interlocutorally.
Yeah, so...
And much like the contract that Joe Haney signed with Nyhart, that he single-handedly signed and was not approved at this...
All three commissioners voted and approved that contract.
We did not approve it, and you signed it anyways.
All three commissioners approved that. We can show you the meeting minutes.
And then we had to correct your problem, and we had to come back to this meeting...
Honorable Commissioners, can we move on from this, please?
Had to go ahead.
Honorable Commissioners, may I?
Because you had already signed it.
So I asked...
No, absolutely not.
I asked, I asked Mr. Hallifield if he would not comment back, so can we move the meeting on, and if you need to make additional comments at the end for Commissioners, that's fine, but this seems, you know, we have a lot of business to take care of, but I'm just giving you my position on it.
Appreciate that, Mr. DiMartino, just wanted to make sure the board was up to speed, that we'll be, we will be receiving a reprimand from the State Board of Accounts for that.
Yeah, so, nothing I can do about that at this point?
No, no.
So moving on, is there any other department head that would like to come up and speak? Hearing none, we're closing department heads. Moving on to request, request travel to Lansing, Michigan for Midwest Gang Investigation Association Conference. Good morning.
Good morning. Morning. I have two officers attending the Midwest Gang Investigation Conference in Lansing, annual conference. And just to put it in perspective, I pulled up the jail record this morning, and this is the list of all gang members currently incarcerated that we will or have had contact with and will need to be aware of. So I think it's an important component of the, the job to be aware. Oh, by the way, I'm Steve Ira, Chief Probation Officer, sorry about that.
Thank you, I'd make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. DiMartino?
They're already loaded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
Just for reference, probation officers are required to maintain a certain number of educational hours every year.
And this goes towards your education?
And this goes towards that certification.
Is this something that was pre-budgeted for in your department?
It's covered by probation fees, we have it signed every year in our budget.
So it's not a county fee?
No, no.
Okay, thank you very much for the record.
Thank you. Request B, consider travel to Illinois, Iowa for Fiddler Supodium, which will be happening May 19th through the 21st.
Ella Bilderbeck, LaPorte County Recorder. This is a training specifically through our software vendor about all the new changes, upcoming programs. This is something we use daily and need to stay up to date on all the new things coming out. That's something we do every year. This gives us a chance to speak to the developers who create all these programs that we use daily, and that way, you know, they can work out the kinks before we actually have to deal with them on a daily basis, so it's a great opportunity for us to learn.
This is not state mandated, though, or for training hours or anything.
It's not.
It's a vendor, it's a vendor organization.
Did this for you?
Yes, yes.
And so what did this mailing cost, who, you know, how did, how was this paid for?
That's paid through my office. It's not...
So you paid to print this through your office?
Yes.
And then who gave permission to put it through to pay the $31,000 that we had to pay for the tax bills?
That's not $31,000, my...
But we paid $31,000 to pay, to mail out the tax bills, correct?
That I don't know.
I can tell you, it was over $31,000. Who gave permission to put this inside of the tax bills?
I spoke to the treasurer, and he agreed to check into the cost, and we had that done, yes.
To check into what cost?
To the cost of printing and including this in the tax bill, so...
The cost of printing was $1,800.
Correct.
Paid for by the taxpayers.
No.
Yes, it was, did it come on your probation, or your revolving fund, or whatever it is called?
Perpetuation.
Perpetuation fund? And those are recorder fees? That's paid by taxpayers.
Correct, but the taxpayers pay for more than just that, and this is something that helps everyone.
So I kind of highlighted here, because it says, Fiddler Technology and the county that provides the information is not responsible for the accuracy, and it's not once, but it's actually twice, where I went ahead and I signed up for it, I signed up this morning for it. And so if there's no accuracy, and the company nor yourself are going to take responsibility for this, you paid $1,800 to have this printed, you inserted it in our tax bills without, with only the permission of, you're saying, the treasurer?
I asked treasurer if he'd be willing to have that included, yes.
So there's no accuracy to this, and then I did get my confirmation, and it just says if there is, they're going to monitor, and if anything of, that comes up with my name on a deed, then they'll contact me. I think that you should have probably came to this board before you went ahead and you decided to do all this. I just think, you know, when you're not taking responsibility for any of the actions that you're putting out there, but I mean, here you clearly get the advertisement of your picture and name put out on the website, and here, I think that this is wrong. And now...
It's not advertising.
The company is paying you back by, by, what do you, what do you get at the supodium? You're going to go to this company's supodium.
They're the ones that we use, not for, this is a side benefit of the fact that we use their program for recording. 92 counties in the state use either this company or another one, there's only two that do this. How are we supposed to stay up to date and be able to do our job correctly if we don't?
Your job, but your job, you're saying that to do your job...
This is a side benefit, every day we record a...
But you're saying that your job is, is to make sure that there's no fraud, but here, clearly it says twice, not once, but twice. It says, neither the company nor the county that provides the information for is responsible for the accuracy, providing the information shall not be reliable on for errors containing here within, or any damages in connection with the use of the information contained. So you did this with this company, you're taking no responsibility...
Sorry, but if you ever read any agreement from any company, there's always something of similar nature, because there's always...
So hence, you agreed to get into a contract with this company, even though it wasn't a written contract, you took $1,800 of taxpayers' money, you had this printed out, you had it put into our tax bills without the commission knowing, and you went ahead and you mailed it with the approval from the treasurer. Thank you, that's all we need to know.
Contract that that company has been in place since, I believe, 2005, if not even before that.
Thank you, that's all we need to know.
This is a side benefit of...
Thank you.
I've got one comment, I'm not defending this action, but I spoke with State Board of Accounts. Technically, you could have done this with permission, but they also suggested that open communication be more involved, and the reason we're requesting this information is because we're scrutinizing all forms of travel, because as we attended yesterday, we're in some big trouble coming financially for things, so we need to really look at whether it's required or not required.
I'll just say that last night, for example, at the Association of Indiana Counties District Meeting, the Association of Indiana Counties was promoting this, this program that you informed LaPorte County residents on, so I'd just like to say thank you for making sure that the people and the amount of people that signed up, this is a good thing, it's utilized by...
Even though it's not accurate.
Most counties all over the state. It's utilized by most counties all over the state.
Even though it may not be accurate.
If, you can feel free to read any contract for any of the different things that you'd like, if, if you would like, and this symposium that you're going to, it's a symposium, I would make, make a motion to approve your request to travel.
Do we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Thank you. I feel that this is a personal attack, and...
It dies for a lack of a second.
I see you approve travels to Florida, everywhere in the country, and you're making difficulty for me...
It dies for the, it dies for a lack of a second, thank you.
Of course, thank you for your personal vendetta.
Thank you. Moving on. We're going to 10A.
We need to make, we need to make a, a motion, or the appointment to the Plan Commission, and I vetted this person, I would recommend that Andy Kapaczek be appointed, that'd be our appointment there, he has voted Democrat in the last primary, and he does reside in own property within the county, and he is not on any other board.
I would nominate Tim Cavender, he's both Democrat in both the last two primaries, so, and also lives unincorporated and isn't serving on any other compensated board.
So we have two nominations on the floor, I guess we'll just do roll call.
Thank you. So just please tell me your preference, and then I'll mark it, and then we'll tell the tally afterwards. So, Mr. Haney?
Tim Cavender.
Mr. Hallifield?
Andy Kapaczek.
And Ms. Grammarosa?
Andy Kapaczek.
So by a two to one vote, Andy Kapaczek is the one elected, elected. Could we get the, can I just get the correct spelling, please, of his last name, if it's possible? If not, we'll look it up and get it right in a minute. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 10B, travel form.
As we've been talking for quite a few months, we need to get this travel under control. If it's state mandated, required, that's fine, but if it's just a vendor thing or something like that, we need to have a very strict policy about how they're going to do it, have a form where the money's coming from, and who's paying for it, and is it required for credit hours, and if it's state mandated. I spoke to Representative Pressel, they, he's going to get me a copy of theirs, along with N.DOTs. Theirs is very, very strict about what they pay for and the expected taxpayers pay for, so we need to, I'm going to make a motion, we asked Mr. DiMartino to start putting together a form, a standard form for all county employees and department heads.
I'd second that, also for discussion, I think, I think that's a great idea, I think it needs to obviously make sure it's... And I vetted this person. I would recommend that Andy Kapaczek be appointed to that, be our appointment there. He has voted Democrat in the last primary and he does reside in own property within a county and he is not on any other board.
I would nominate Tim Cavender. He's both Democrat in both the last two primaries. So, and also lives unincorporated and isn't serving on any other compensated board.
So we have two nominations on the floor. I guess we'll just do roll call.
Thank you. So just please tell me your preference and then I'll mark it and then we'll tell the tally afterwards. So Mr. Haney?
Tim Cavender.
Mr. Hallifield?
Andy Kapaczek.
And Ms. Graham Marissa?
Andy Kapaczek.
So by a two-to-one vote, Andy Kapaczek is the one elected. Could we get the, can I just get the correct spelling, please, of his last name, if it's possible? If not, we'll look it up and get it right in minutes. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 10B, travel form.
As we've been talking for quite a few months, we need to get this travel under control. If it's state mandated, required, that's fine. But if it's just a vendor thing or something like that, we need to have a very strict policy about how they're going to do it, have a form where the money's coming from and who's paying for it and is it required for credit hours. And if it's state mandated, I spoke to Representative Pressel. He's going to get me a copy of theirs along with NDOTs. Theirs is very, very strict about what they pay for and the expected taxpayers pay for. So we need to, I'm going to make a motion. We asked Mr. DiMartino to start putting together a form, a standard form for all county employees and department heads.
I'd second that. Also for discussion, I think that's a great idea. I think it needs to obviously make sure it's being enforced equally across all departments and across all elected officials. Preferential treatment, sort of like we've, or dispreferential treatment, if you will, like we've seen here this morning, is certainly concerning. You know, I'll obviously always worry about hypocrisy with what the board does. We talked about the AIC meeting yesterday, that several of us attended, including myself and you. Obviously, we don't take credit hours or anything else for attending these meetings. While the cost was not high, there was no overnight stay or anything like that. It's one of those things where if we're going to hold our employees to only exact bare minimum amount of training that they need to keep their certifications or licenses up, then we should be holding our same selves accountable for that here on the board. You know, yesterday, you and I received no credit for what we did yesterday.
But did you go for the class?
I'm going to take it online.
So you did not attend the class yesterday, even though you signed up for it?
I didn't sign up for it. I appreciate the question. I'd love to clarify that. So I didn't sign up for the class. Our secretary inadvertently signed me up for the class. Afterwards, she told me about it and I was not able to attend earlier in the day. But luckily, we were able to reach out and contact them. And since I wasn't able to attend in person, I could, I can do a remote, they'll have a remote option available to be able to view. At the same time, at the time that she signed me up, the cancellation period was beyond that for that class that I didn't ask to be signed up for. So you can try and smirk and do whatever you want here, but you're only throwing your executive assistant under the bus and not me.
You asked her to?
No.
Mr. Carr, do you have something to say?
Moving on.
I do have a comment.
Mr. Carr, do you have something?
So now that we're in May and you're coming to budget hearings, if there are departments that need travel, they need to try to put it in their budget and try to get it approved by the council. So we've heard comments over the months, well, we do this every year. If that's something that's needed, they can take care of that in the budget process and then they don't, you don't have to deal with those issues should the council think that it's appropriate for travel. And that would just be my recommendation to let the department heads know that as we're coming up to budgets.
Excellent.
That's a great recommendation.
Okay, so we have a motion to have the attorney look at the travel form, to look at what the state has, I, NDOT has, and then, did we, we had a second?
Yes.
We had discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on, 10C, records retention.
Over the last four months, building maintenance has been asked to store, remove, destroy documents. And they've come to me and asked if they can or what, because by state statute, we are to have a records retention meeting every year. We have not had one for four years in a row. So I checked online, checked what, I even called the records department down there to make sure that the ones they're destroying or classifying are done correctly. And again, every time I call down there, they always ask, "Why are we not having this meeting?" I reached out to Julianne Havens, the judge, because she is on that board, circ, the judge, and a list of all other people that are on that board. I guess a meeting date has been approached, but we need to make sure we carry these on and certify that these records are being taken care of properly because the state's asking questions. So that's why I think, how will we approach that, Mr. DiMartino? Do we have to have a policy?
So, yeah, we can put together a policy. You have your meeting set, right?
I...
I'm assuming at your meeting and your minutes, at that point in time, you set the next one. So it's done.
Okay.
You know, if you want an additional policy, that's fine.
Because the state statute, we could probably use that, correct?
Yes.
Because it has a list of people who are required to be on it and it's quite extensive.
Following it.
Yeah, you just need to follow it.
And then they're questioning why, because every time I call down and ask, they say, "Well, what does your record retention meeting say? We haven't had one."
Is there a commissioner on that board?
Yes, there is.
And who's that?
We haven't got that far yet.
Well, it's usually the president or I can appoint someone.
Yes.
So then, set the meeting.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to appoint someone to the record retention meetings. And so I would nominate Steve Hallifield. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Who's the chair of that, who is the chair of that department?
I believe it's Julianne Havens.
Okay, so then, we can get with Circuit Court staff and get that on the calendar.
Okay. Yeah, I've already, I've reached out to her a couple of times and included Clerk Stevens on her because she's on that board as well.
Okay. Get a date solid so it's there.
Okay, thank you.
And then you can make it every year at that time. You know, set a time when people are going to be there and then just roll it over.
Okay.
May I have permission to add something to that?
Yeah.
Emails have been sent out and I believe it's set for the 21st because all the other dates have passed.
On June 21st?
On, no.
May 21st, May.
21st, I believe it's set for. I don't remember the time, but, you know, I just wanted to say there is something on the books right now.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, moving on to new business, 11A, consider Michiana's insurance renewal. Stacy Green will be presenting. I don't know who this young gentleman is with her, but you can introduce him.
Good morning. This is Karen Olinway, our agency principal and teammate on the LaPorte County account.
Okay.
So I'm here, obviously, today to present the property and casualty and workers' compensation renewal for the county. But before I begin, I would like to thank all the staff members, individuals, everybody who has assisted me in gathering multiple amounts of information this year for the renewal, as it's been a little different than previous years. This year, all of our carriers remain the same except for the exception of one building, which I'll get to in a little bit. We've been pleased with the incumbent carriers' customer service and claims service, and many of our carrier premiums remain flat or solid decreases, which is good. As we did in December of last year, we short-rated the work comp so that we could now move the workers' compensation renewal to align with all of our other lines, allowing for easier budgeting for the county level. We've been pleased with key risk as we have worked alongside with them implementing the return to work program, which has a positive impact on the rate. I'm pleased to report that the experience modification decreased from 1.73% to 1.48%, allowing a significant decrease in premium for that line. This year, travelers did elect to exclude 809 State Street from the property schedule, discontinuing property coverage due to over $11.7 million in claims payout since 2022 on this building. I immediately reached out to several brokers and carriers, trying to secure coverage for the building in hopes that we would not have to attempt to self-insure. I've requested quotes from the county as a complete package as well versus just trying to insure 809 State Street. Many of the carriers advised that the county is too large for their appetite and were also not interested in providing coverage for 809 State Street due to claim severity and/or open claims. Others advised they don't have an appetite for jail buildings. I do have several offers of coverage, which I've presented to each of you prior to the meeting. I am asking for approval to renew all the lines as presented. In addition, I've also presented coverage options for 809 State Street. The carriers that are offering are layering the coverage, meaning that several carriers are accepting a portion of the risk for 809 State Street. Each carrier has advised that they will continue to seek additional layers with the hope of increasing coverage at an affordable price. So at this time, I'm requesting approval for not only the entire package as a whole, but then also separating out one of the options that I've presented for 809 State Street.
So do we need to make two motions on this?
I would do that. I would do everything excluding 809 and then bring 809 to the floor.
I'll make a motion that we accept the renewal policy for everything but 809, as you presented.
And would you like the $1,000 deductible for comp and collision for the auto physical as it stands now?
I think the 2,500, or no, the 2,500 is the one we discussed.
That's correct.
Okay, then we'll stay at the 1,000.
Okay.
I'll second that. Yeah, staying at the 1,000 is, I think we calculated out about 14 vehicle on average crash. If we go over that 14 just by one, then we're already, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Attorney, would you like to comment anything?
I've reviewed everything. It seems to be in order. You know, the sticky wicket's next.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. And now...
Next. Now the next.
809 State Street. I did present several options. I had the opportunity to discuss some of the options. And I've been sending emails as I've been getting updates because I still have layers coming in. But now I'm kind of at a standstill. Whichever avenue we go, they want to know that that's affordable and that's the carriers we want to go with. And then they'll continue to add layers. So I could come back at future meetings to try to increase the coverage amount, but I can't do so without an approval for one of the options presented.
Okay.
So what would be the pleasure of the board?
Stacy came to my office and spoke, I think she talked to all of us. And I think option two, which we pay, and actually, we actually pay about $30,000 more a year in premium, but we're going to gain $5 million in coverage.
That's correct.
Since we can no longer bond in the county to do a project like this. If this building completely collapses, we're, got a big, big problem.
That's correct.
So I make a motion that we recommend, or that we go for option two for the, a little bit more premium, but a lot higher coverage.
Yeah, I'll second that. It's for $30,000 for an extra $5 million is, in this case, considering, definitely worth it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to go with Plan Two or B. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so just for clarification for the record, Stacy, that is, the initial is with Lexington, right?
That is correct.
And then Risk?
Smith would be Layer Two.
Risk Smith would be Layer Two?
That's correct.
And then Arch?
Has no play in this.
Has no play in it. Okay, we're just needing for clarification.
It would be the one on the middle of the spreadsheet.
Okay, got it. So the total premium for 809 is 350 plus taxes.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then if it's the pleasure of the board and you're interested in receiving additional layers as they become available, I would be glad to come back to meetings to see if we're interested in trying to increase that.
So the layers are 10 plus 15?
That's correct.
So it's $25,000.
$25 million.
$25 million.
I wish, $25 million, yeah. Lawyers are not good with math.
So do we make a motion if we want to review?
Yes, I think it would be, that I'd make a motion to move forward, just to at least take a look at what our options are as far as for insuring the rest of the building. You know, if we come back with another $30,000 considering, you know, for another five or 10 million, then it may be worth considering. If it's something outrageous, then, you know, no, so.
So I have permission to bind the first two layers? And then, once those are bound, if additional layers become available, I can bring it to your attention?
Yes, please.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second that she will continue to look for better quotes for us. And then hopefully during the year, she can surprise us with good news.
Yeah, that would be a nice surprise.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I do have applications. Can I leave them with?
Yes, hand them to Diana and we'll get them taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Consider special detail for the Sheriff's Department during Fair Week. Our honorable Ron Heeg, our sheriff.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Heeg, Sheriff, LaPorte County. This is our annual contract that we do with the Fair Board every year. You've seen this before. Nothing has changed. This has gone to legal for his review. The only thing that's changed are obviously the dates of the fair. And we were able to secure a small raise for the men and women who are working out at the fair this year through the Fair Board. And we do ask for your support on this.
I support this, but I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
The difference in the number of sheriff's deputies that are going to be on staff out there different days. I mean, the 13th, I believe, is beef show, the 21st is hog show, and the 18th, the Friday, would be the sale. Is there any reason why we're adding extra staff off and on?
Yeah, the major, the biggest reason why we add staff is for like the big nights that draw the large crowds, such as the concerts. There's a couple, there's one night that there's a huge demolition derby that usually causes us issues out there as well, too. So just working with the Fair Board, we don't want to have anything extra out there that's not needed. But obviously, on the big nights with the large crowds, we do put on additional staff.
Oh, okay, thank you. That's, I was just curious. I make a motion that we, oh, I'm sorry, Joe.
Let's, all right, go ahead.
Oh, I make a motion that we accept this.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
If I may approach for a quick signature.
Sure. We're just going to, she needs to have a copy of it. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
Moving on, consider ordinance established by LaPorte County CO Storm Water Management Department.
So before you is ordinance number 2025-1. And as you know, we've been working with MS4 and Storm Water in order to get everything in compliance with the state. We redid all the policies and procedures and everything to meet with the permit last year. This is one step further in actually establishing the department, getting a board of directors. Because our hope is that in the next 18 months, it's going to have its own budget, it's going to have its own income, it's going to be self-sustaining in and of itself, so that with its budgeted amounts, and it's going to be able to support itself with its own fees, so it's not taking any more taxpayers' fees. So this is the first step. The commission retained Jim Myers to help with this. And I've looked through everything and everything seems to be in order.
So what's the pleasure of the board?
So this is an ordinance. And so this would be a first reading, should you all choose. So if we're going to do that and you don't want the whole four pages read, then somebody would need to make a motion to read by title only. That would be the first motion.
Make a motion, read by title only?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Can we, with that second, can we discuss this now?
It's open for discussion, yes.
As a farmer, especially livestock, and I've got several people that are in livestock, I mean, they've already got to deal with IDEM, FSA, NRCS, Army Corps of Engineers for Wetlands. I just, I'm concerned that this is going to create another level of bureaucracy that they're going to have to jump through hoops, which they already jumped through a tremendous amount of hoops just so they can have a cow on their property.
This is not another level of bureaucracy. Our permit comes from IDEM and we're responsible to follow those rules and regulations.
And what IDEM started with?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not an additional, and so what I've seen happen recently and what we've been really good at doing recently is been able to, through our office, coordinate with the Army Corps, coordinate with IDEM, so people aren't hit with all these agencies coming through. So what we've done is we've set plans and then we've gotten pre-stamped from the Army Corps saying, "You're good to go if you do this." So it's actually been making it easier for folks in order to get their permitting.
Okay, so they, the county can't come in and say, "No, we don't want you to see this. Don't want to have you, don't have..."
It's more, it's more collaborative. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to make this collaborative.
Okay.
Yep.
Any more discussion? So we have a motion and a second.
To read by title only.
To read by title only. All those in favor say aye.
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 So for first reading, this is LaPorte County Board of Commissioners, ordinance number 2025-1, establishing LaPorte County Storm Water Management Department managed by a board of directors. We're done, first reading.
Okay, so...
Make a motion to...
You don't have to.
No.
On second reading.
So then we vote on this now?
No, it's on second reading.
Second reading, next time.
So can we do the second reading now or we have to wait till the next meeting?
Let's wait till the next meeting because we didn't move... Let's wait till the next meeting, because we didn't move to suspend the rule, and this is not...
That important.
In two weeks, it's fine.
Okay. All right, real good. Moving on. We have considered Baker-Tilly contract for the internal controls. We are going to table it. My suggestion would be to table it. Until we get the contract, we look at it really good, and we figure out what's all the internal controls that we're going to do.
Yes, I, I make a motion that we table this till the next meeting, so we can go through this and see what's all involved, and have some questions for Mr. Rosenbaum when we get a chance.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on. Consider Kankakee River Basin Commission Appointment.
We received a letter from Scott Pelaf, who's the Director of the Basin. He's recommending that Dick Welsh be re-imported, or reappointed, excuse me. I've known Dick a long, long time. He's been involved with the Kankakee River, the White River, the Yellow River, all of them. He probably has more knowledge about river, drainage, and wetlands than anyone that I know of, and particularly in the farmland area. So I make a motion that we nominate him for the appointment.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for Dick Wash to be on the Kankakee River Basin Commission. All those, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, and we're going to 11F, the litigation.
So, yeah, so this is pre-litigation. This was the fire sprinkler that flooded the, the basement over here. I've come to tentative agreement with the vendor's insurance company, and we've come to a number of $90,000 in order to go ahead and wrap this up, and we can get all the work done for that $90,000, including the mitigation that was done, plus the re-handling and rewiring and everything of the pumps that are under the area that had the water. So it is no expenditure on behalf of the county to get this wrapped up. So I would just need your approval to accept the settlement offer. Well, actually, the initial settlement offer was $8,000 less, but I was able to get them to $90,000, and we can get the job done.
And this then will, that bill will be completely done, and project management will be taken care of?
We will not have any responsibility.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept this.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, I'll get that release done, and then we'll get the funds and get the rest of the work done.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I think there's just two other things that we'd like to make.
There's a couple of things that we discussed this morning. The sidewalks in front of the Hyler Building, they're going to hold off on pouring of concrete till after the 12th, when the tax bills are done. That way, otherwise, they were going to have to tear out the sidewalks in front of that door, close that door. I spoke with Michelle, and I spoke with Dan Barony. They were, Michelle was going to put signs up, Dan Barony was going to open his door